We are live, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. I'm going to do something a little bit unprecedented, which is something I do on a fairly regular basis. City clerk gets a little nervous, city manager gets a little nervous, not sure where he's going to go. This is Black History Month. It's an important day in our community. The first thing we typically will do is the Pledge of Allegiance. Is there a young member of the Black American community that would like to come up here and join me in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I'm going to come down. I'm hoping by the time I get down there, somebody comes up and joins me, okay? Somebody's getting dessert later. The first item on the agenda is always something that we thoroughly enjoy here in the city of Newark. It's introducing our new employees. I would ask Andrew Masantry, our sergeant, to join me at the podium, please. Not a new employee, for those of you that are wondering. We have great pride in our city regarding anybody that serves the public in the area of law enforcement or fire protection. Because you look at the storms, for example, that we've had over the last few days, really kind of creating a dangerous situation in our community for people that are driving on the road or just may have homes impacted by the storms. But our fire department, our police department, men and women are out there 24 hours a day in terrible weather to make sure that we're safe in our homes and in our communities. And Sergeant Masantry is certainly one of those people that we want to recognize. So he was promoted to sergeant on January 1st, 2025. Andrew was born and raised on the East Coast in his second-generation police officer, which again is not uncommon in public safety. His father was a New York police officer for 20 years. He attended college at Cal State Northridge and received a bachelor's degree in sociology with a concentration in criminology. After college, Andrew worked at Facebook as an intelligence analyst. Andrew started his career in law enforcement with the San Jose Police Department in 2013. I left San Jose just before you got there. He lateral to the New York Police Department in 2014. He worked as a detective for over six years, two of which as the department's lead detective. Andrew has served as an acting sergeant, field training officer, force operations instructor, peer support team member, and has held prior collateral assignments on the crime negotiations team and the SWAT team. Over his career, Andrew was selected as a Newark Police Department Employee of the Quarter and Employee of the Semester. He's also received the Department Blue Award, three Silver Awards, and a Medal of Valor. Andrew has been married to his wife Teresa since 2012 and is a proud girl dad with two beautiful daughters, Lacey and Peyton. Let's hear it for the sergeant's promotion. Jason Masters. Jason Masters was hired as a Public Safety Dispatcher, PSD, on January 13th, 2025. Jason grew up in Millbrae and graduated from Mills High School. After high school, Jason earned his bachelor's degree in childhood and adolescent development from San Jose State University. Jason's previous work experience includes working as a software support engineer at Honey PayPal and as a code coach at the Cedar School, where he's helping inspire young children and adolescents exploring coding. Again, our jobs here in government are full-time jobs, but we find as public servants to our communities to find other opportunities where we can give back. And this is just simply another example where this young man has taken the opportunity to help those in his community. He's a big basketball fan. It's hard to be a basketball fan these days. I hear you. No, I'm sorry, it's true. He loves watching the Warrior, Go Dubs! I know. He also enjoys long walks and hiking with his dog, Martin. What kind of dog is Martin?
Chihuahua terrier mix.
So, about that big? Morgan Peterson. It's always funny to see a park-and-wreck person sitting up here in the front row because they're always in the back row. I've only known Morgan for a short period of time, but probably if you come across city employees, she is one of those folks that is probably one of the most enthusiastic public employees in the city organization. Always smiling, always willing to help. You never see her having a bad day. And that's what government service is all about. She's a lifelong New York resident, oh by the way. She attended Newark Unified School District. She earned a Bachelor's of Science degree in liberal arts with a minor in linguistics and both a concentration and certificate in teaching English as a second language from Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. Morgan then earned her preliminary multiple-subject teaching credential from CSU East Bay, where she was able to compete, I'm sorry, complete her student teaching at her elementary school, Kennedy. She was an elementary and middle school teacher in the school district and Fremont School District prior to joining the city of Newark and taught every grade from TK through 8th grade over the course of three years. Wow. Morgan began working part-time with the city in 2022, initially in recreation and then economic development. She now joins the Community Development Department as a Management Analyst One, assisting all divisions. Morgan has found that the skills that she has developed as a teacher have been a natural fit for her new role, shifting from analyzing student test data, managing classroom schedules, lesson planning, teaching students and building classroom culture, to analyzing project data, managing division schedules, developing workshops, collecting and sharing information on cross-department projects, and assisting with community events. She was, she has loved every minute of working for the city and works with fantastic staff. In her free time, you have free time? Morgan enjoys board games, art, and traveling. She has been to over 25 countries and over 10 U.S. state boundaries. I'm sorry, territories. Her favorite activities include choir, theater, amusement park, engineering and design. That's for fun? Okay. And trampoline and gymnastics, the Equestrian Club, and the Renaissance Fair Maker's Tent. Morgan has volunteered at the Tri-City Animal Shelter, the San Luis Obispo Animal Shelter, and the Woods Humane Society, and the Viola Blythe Fireworks Booth. She is reigning champion among her friends at a Just Dance and attends hockey games. I'm not going to ask for any kind of demonstration on the dance. As much as city manager wanted me to put that in there, I said, "No, no. That's not, that's not what we're here for." Morgan loves to learn and solve puzzles. She's not afraid to ask questions so that she can better understand the world around her and people of various perspectives, aiding her in the ability to come up with multiple creative solutions to problems. Please congratulate Morgan. Naz. Hi, Naz. Naz is saying, "Oh, he got off so simple. He didn't even try to pronounce my last name." How do you pronounce your last name? Giladadin. Okay, thanks. Naz earned her PhD, by the way, in disaster studies from Kobe University in Japan, where she conducted original research on the mental health recovery of disaster survivors. She examined how social support networks and community resources influence resilience, shaping her belief in the power of collaboration in a strong supportive environment. In 2022, Naz moved to the United States and began volunteering with the city of Newark, assisting small businesses in their post-pandemic recovery. In 2023, she was hired by the city for a temporary role as a business liaison, where she continued assisting the business community, ensuring that local businesses have the resources to grow and adopt. Naz is drawn to the humanitarian side of economic development, the opportunity to connect with people, understand their challenges, and provide support. Having lived in four different countries, she has built a deep sense of empathy and her ability to connect with people from diverse backgrounds. Her background in psychology and disaster studies, combined with these experiences, has equipped her with the skills to navigate challenges and support the business community. Whether helping small business owners or being part of the community-driven initiatives, Naz finds fulfillment in creating opportunities that empower others. Outside of work, she enjoys spending time with her family, friends, and exploring new places. Welcome, Naz. It's always fun to introduce new employees. You know, you see these folks coming in and the enthusiasm in their face to serve the public. It's, it's really heartfelt. Next, I'd like to proclaim February as Black History Month, and I'd like to invite the following folks to join me at the podium. Ms. Jean Ficklin, Danielle Cranon-Jones, Raquel Thomas, Adriana Fraser-Burrell, and Tatiana Jones. If those folks could join me here, I'd appreciate it. Ms. Jean Ficklin. Come on, Howard. No, no, there's never a wrong side. First of all, let me say we have one of the most significant historical Black figures in our community here with Ms. Jean Ficklin, one of our most significant. Did you know that the Storytime Room at the Alameda County Library is named after Ms. Jean Ficklin? Did you know that? A small honor that we can give somebody that has such high stature here in our community, and hope you know that. She's also the founder of the Afro-American Cultural and Historical Society. The reason why we continue to recognize Martin Luther King every January is because of Ms. Ficklin and the work that she does with her organization in bringing us together to make sure that we recognize the value and the importance of Martin Luther King every year. Thank you for doing that. Did you know that one of the mission statements from her organization, "Knowing our ancestors, strengthening our families and our communities"? That's one of their statements. And you know, we talked tonight about the city of Newark being a welcoming community and reaffirming that tonight. When you talk about strengthening, strengthening our communities and our families and everything that we're about here in the city of Newark. So thank you for that. She was the first African-American educator, instructor, for the Newark Unified School District, retiring after 33 years in 1987. After 33 years. You know, we can point to other communities who have, you know, significant, you know, Black leaders, African-American leaders in their community. Nobody stands up to Jean Ficklin. Nobody stands up to Jean Ficklin. And we are so proud of you and so proud of your accomplishments in our city. With that being said, it's my pleasure to issue proclamation number 1930, Black History Month, whereas in February of 1969, the idea for the Black History Month was promoted by Black students and educators at Kent State University, following the first celebration of Black History Month on campus and local surroundings one year later. Whereas in 1976, President Carter, sorry, President Carter. I can't even read the damn thing. President Ford praised Black History Month. It might be because President Carter recently passed away, got him on my mind. Is that fair? Thank you. Urging all citizens to seize the opportunity to honor the 100 often-neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. Whereas the 2025 Black History Month theme, African-Americans and Labor, is a powerful reflection on the pivotal role that the hard work of African-Americans have played and continue to play in shaping our country's history. Whereas this theme underscores the diverse and significant ways in which labor, whether voluntary or involuntary, skilled or unskilled, has been at the core of the Black American experience. Now therefore, I, Michael Hannan, the mayor of the city of Newark, on behalf of my colleagues on the Newark City Council, declare February 25 as Black History Month in Newark and urge all residents to celebrate and honor these profound contributions, shedding light in how work, both historically and present-day, continues to shape the identity, the culture, and the economic status of our communities and the value and the importance they bring to our communities every day. So it's with great pleasure that I award this proclamation to Ms. Jean Ficklin, and I also award a proclamation to Ms. Cranon-Jones. Ms. Ficklin?
Ms. Cranon-Jones?
Thank you.
A few words. Just a few. First of all, talk about, first of all, talk about your love for the mayor and all the fine things he does for the community. I wrote you a script here.
To all of you, thank you for being here tonight. We are indeed honored to have experienced with the community, adjoining communities 50 years of African-American culture and history. It has been our honor to share with the community, beginning with Mayor Valentine Hara Lewis, Mayor Dave Smith, Ellen Nagy, and now, where did you go? Oh, Mayor Hannan. We are indeed thankful for the support and the respect that you have given us over the years. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I couldn't accept this without acknowledging Tatiana, Raquel, and Adrian, who stand alongside me this evening. I would like to begin by expressing our sincere gratitude to Mayor Hannan and the city council for their thoughtful presentation of this Black History Month proclamation. Thank you. Your support and recognition of this important day in our nation's history truly mean a great deal. And we are thankful for your commitment to celebrating freedom and equality. We also would like to extend a special acknowledgement to Jean Ficklin and the Afro-American Cultural and Historical Society. Their organization has provided a vital platform for Black Americans in our area to share our history, culture, and experiences through educational and cultural activities. Your dedication to preserving and promoting our heritage has empowered our community and educated generations, and for that, we are profoundly grateful. Thank you. It is a true honor to accept this proclamation in celebration of Black History Month because this month reminds us to reflect on the extraordinary contributions of Black individuals throughout history, those who have paved the way and those who continue to shape our world today. Black History Month is not just about remembering the past, but about creating a brighter future. It's about empowering our youth, challenging injustice, and building a society where equality and opportunity are available for all. I stand here today deeply inspired by the resilience and strength of our ancestors and by the progress we continue to make together. We honor their sacrifices by ensuring that their fight for injustice and equity lives on in our work and actions every day. Thank you for this recognition, and together we will continue to push forward. I'm going to go off script a little bit because earlier today, we held services for a dear uncle of ours. And that's where we were earlier in the day. And something resonated with me. Because dear Uncle Walter held a business for 33, 33 years, a janitorial service. And in his obituary, it read, "His work ethic, dedication, and loyalty were evident in everything he did and his commitment to the business that he left. And he left a lasting impact on all those he served." And so I stand here today, and I think I can speak for all of us, when I say it's an honor to work for an organization who acknowledges diversity in their staff and days like today, months like this month. So it is an honor, and we, we will continue to serve this community with pride. Thank you all.
Colleagues, come down and join me for a group picture.
Why don't we stand here?
Shouldn't the president of the organization be in the picture?
Of course.
Sandra, that's cute for you to come home.
All right, ready? One, two, three.
I just wanted to say something real quick. I got a great opportunity this past weekend to go to the Afro-American Cultural and Historical Society big event that they had at the Silman Center, and it was phenomenal. It was so well put together. There was a lot of great stuff. Poor Sandra saw me walking in. I think I had six bags of clothes and items and another bag of all the food with the collard greens and all the jazz. So I was super, being a woman from the South, I was so happy to be there. So I just want to tell you guys, I know those events are very difficult to put together. It takes a lot of energy and time to bring in those people. And it was just a great, great opportunity to be there. I got to learn about a lot of neat stuff, about a state historical park that we had that I had no clue about, and there was so much more. So from the bottom of my heart, by putting together those events, it's just, it brings exposure. It teaches more things, and I really appreciate what the organization does. It was wonderful. Thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, as we look at the agenda, the next item is the presentation from the 2-1-1 folks. Due to unforeseen circumstances, they were not able to be here this evening, so we will defer their presentation on 2-1-1 until a later month, probably March. That would be my guess. Colleagues, I'm going to take the moment to adjust the agenda just briefly here because there's a number of folks here in the audience. Ladies and gentlemen, this would be down under the city council matters, where we, the council, are going to consider a reaffirmation, not a new adoption, but a reaffirmation of Newark as a welcoming city. We did that back in 2017, and I thought it was important to get word out to the community about what that resolution means, what we've done as a community to ensure that all of our residents feel safe in our community, whether they are, whether they are a documented citizen or an undocumented citizen. When we defined a welcoming community, and we did this in some cases for some selfish reasons. Because when you have citizens that are not documented, those are the folks that are most vulnerable in your community, the folks that are, be less likely to call for services because they're afraid that by doing so, that they will then expose themselves as maybe not being here legally in the country and therefore maybe not wanting to file a complaint. So we've made it real clear for many, many years that if you are a resident of our community, your documentation doesn't matter because we want you to be fully participant in whatever issues are that you're experiencing, your family's experiencing, or your neighborhood is experiencing. And whether you are from China, whether you are from Mexico, whether you're from Central America, we are a welcoming community in the city of Newark. Your immigration status does not matter to us. But again, we're a local government. We're not the federal government. So I want to make it clear that as we do what we do to try to make folks feel welcome, there are certain things out of our control that we can only continue to emphasize. This is our role. This is what we stand for and will continue to stand for in hopes of making sure that our community feels safe. I've heard over the last few weeks, to my despair, that folks are in fear. Kids may or may not be attending school. Parents may or may not be attending their jobs. That's not good for our community, and it's certainly not good for society. I want kids to go to school. I want parents to go to work. Parents that are working are able to provide to their children, and that's so important in our community. I want parents, family members, to feel if there's a crisis on their street, they're not going to hesitate to call 911 and have our new sergeant show up at their location to say, "I'm here to help you. I'm not here about your immigration status. I don't really care about that. You called me because there's an emergency. I'm here to address that emergency, and that's the only issue that is important to me today." Okay? So let's talk about this. I want to kind of go through a little bit of a conversation about this, and I'm certainly, colleagues, welcome to your thoughts and the community's thoughts as we move this item forward. So we passed Resolution 10.598. So we passed Resolution 10.598 back in 2017, and I didn't copy the entire resolution, but I wanted to make it real clear, what does it mean? We are a diverse, multi-ethnic community that we celebrate and embrace its many cultures. And how ironic that we're celebrating Black History Month on the same night that we're doing this, because a lot of the themes that you heard from that community are themes that we support in all of our communities. We promote the health, safety, and success of all. The city of Newark promotes inclusiveness, mutual respect, and cooperation through the community. The Newark Police Department, in keeping with this philosophy, does not actively participate in the enforcement of federal immigration laws, which are under the jurisdiction of the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement. Let's look at our census over the last number of decades. In 2010, the number of foreign-born folks in our community was almost 38%. 37.2% of our community in 2010 were foreign-born. In 2010, 52.6 spoke a language other than English at home. In 2020, you see the foreign-born population increased to 43.6. And the number of folks that speak English other than, that speak language other than English at home has risen to 57.2. That's as of 2020. The state of California, recognizing the challenges that we face as a state, adopted Section 7284.6, which states, "Use agency or department monies or personnel to investigate, interrogate, detain, detect, or arrest persons for the immigration enforcement purposes, including any of the following..." Oh, by the way, did you see the words up there at the top? "Shall not." We shall not do these things. We shall not make inquiry into an individual's immigration status. Period. We will not detain an individual on the basis of a hold request. That's state law. Okay? So not only have we developed our own policies here in Newark, but now state law has gone even further to say, "Local communities, you shall not do the following." So if we do the following, then we, the city of Newark, are breaking state law, and that's not going to happen. In conjunction with that, our Newark Police Department has a policy manual, and in their policy manual, it explicitly states, it's the policy of the Newark Police Department, that "All members make personal and professional commitments to equal enforcement of the law and equal service to the public. Confidence in this commitment will increase the effectiveness of this department in protecting and serving the entire community and recognizing the dignity of all persons regardless of their national origin or immigration status." That's in their policy manual. It further states, "To encourage crime reporting and cooperation in the investigation of criminal activity, all individuals, regardless of their immigration status, must feel secure that contacting or being addressed by members of law enforcement will not automatically lead to immigration inquiry and/or deportation. While it may be necessary to determine the identity of a victim or witness, members shall treat all individuals equally and not in any way that would violate the United States or California constitutions. Officers shall not inquire into an individual's immigration status for immigration enforcement So this is the resolution that we adopted, and again, one of the reasons why this is so important, and Mr. Benun, I'll ask you a question. When we did the 2020 census, because most local governments rely on an accurate census because the money that we then receive as a community is dependent upon the number of folks that live in our communities. The more folks we count, the more money we receive. So selfishly, it's in our best interest that we count everybody in our community, and one of those questions that we're not going to be asking you as a member of that census process is, what is your immigration status? We don't care, because if you live in one of my neighborhoods, one of our neighborhoods, you're going to receive city services, whether it's to improve streets, whether it's to improve schools, whether it's in terms of immediate response by fire and police, those are services we provide. We don't figure out what your immigration status is, we're trying to provide those services because we don't care. All we care about is you've asked for services, we're responsible for providing those services, and we're going to do so by counting as many people as we can. And I'm really proud of our community, by the way. There's a lot of hard work by a lot of folks in this city to go out there and count every individual that we could count and make it clear to them that your participation was for the betterment of our community, your neighborhood, and your family. Mr. Benun, roughly what percentage of our residents were we able to calculate as part of that process? What was the percentage of folks that participated? Do you recall roughly what that number was?
I don't recall that number off the top of my head, but I do recall it being fairly, slightly above, I think, county-wide average.
Right.
So a significant amount of participation.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, it was probably in the neighborhood of 80%, if not maybe a little bit higher than that, which was higher than the 2010 census tract numbers, as I recall. In fact, Newark was one of the cities in the state of California that was really applauded for its efforts in trying to make sure that every member of its community was counted. God, I'd love next time we do a census 2030 to get like 99.5. Just think of the money that comes to our city. Seriously, I'm not saying that because I want, we want that money so we can provide better services for our community. So selfishly, we want to count everybody. Okay? I had seven kids, I did my part. Ladies and gentlemen, I think it's important for us to read this resolution into the record, and because we are an inclusive community, I'm going to ask my vice mayor if she would read the whereas is after me in Spanish. So those that are watching, those that are observing, know that this is a commitment on this city council that we stand by what we say, and we're going to make sure that people feel safe in our community. I want your kids going back to school, I want you going back to work with the notion that you are going to be protected by your police department and by your city council to make sure we do the right thing to make sure that you feel protected. Okay? So this resolution, as I mentioned, was adopted back in 2017, whereas the city of Newark is committed to building a neighborly community that is inclusive, hospitable, and welcoming.
I took a semester of Spanish.
I took a semester of Spanish. You want me to do this for you? Okay. Las ciudad de Newark está comprometiendo que va a ayudar a la gente, a las familias y las instituciones para estar aquí, para que se ir mejorando y evaluar las contribuciones de todos los miembros de la comunidad, incluyendo lo que están viniendo de aquí y también los inmigrantes.
I love the Spanish language. It sounds so much more artistic, you know, in terms of the flavor.
I didn't get a chance to prep, so I'm winging it.
Whereas the city of Newark is a diverse, multi-ethnic community that celebrates and embraces its many cultures.
La ciudad de Newark es un lugar, una comunidad muy divertida, con muchas diferentes culturas y diferente gente, que estamos celebrando y estamos captivando muchas diferentes culturas.
Whereas the city of Newark is committed to continue enhancing the cultural fabric, economic success, global competitiveness, and overall prosperity for all those who choose to make Newark their home in the city.
La ciudad de Newark está prometido para seguir mejorando nuestra fábrica cultural, nuestros éxitos de cosas de economía, ayudando con la competitiveness global.
Global.
Global, but competitiveness.
Competitiva.
Competitiva, global, y también la prosperidad de todos los que escogen este lugar para ser su casa en nuestra ciudad.
Whereas the city of Newark promotes the health, safety, and success of all.
La ciudad de Newark está de acuerdo con toda la salud, la seguridad, y todo el buen ansiente y que le vaya a ver con todos los negocios de todas las personas y cosas aquí.
Whereas the city of Newark promotes inclusiveness, mutual respect, and cooperation throughout the community.
La ciudad de Newark está de acuerdo con la inclusividad, para incluir a todos, el respeto mutuo, el respeto para todos, y la cooperación sobre toda la comunidad.
Whereas the Newark Police Department, in keeping with this philosophy, does not actively participate in the enforcement of federal immigration laws, which are under the jurisdiction of the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement.
El departamento de la policía de Newark está de acuerdo con estas felicidades de que estamos hablando ahorita, no va a participar activamente en el acuerdo de estas leyes de la inmigración federal, que están abajo del enforzamiento de la inmigración y los costos del Estados Unidos.
Whereas the Newark Police Department, like many other police departments in California, focuses their time on responding to and investigating high priority crimes and not the enforcement of federal immigration laws.
El departamento de la policía de Newark, como muchos otros departamentos de policías aquí en California, están enfocando su tiempo para responder y investigar a todos los crímenes que están de la prioridad más alta y no empujando las leyes federales de la inmigración.
Whereas the Newark Police Department has no desire to undermine community trust and deter law-abiding individuals from reporting crimes or coming forward as witnesses.
El departamento de la policía de Newark no tiene gusto para meterse, para quitar el soporte y el creamiento de la comunidad, y también...
Deterrunque.
Y queremos que todos los indones, queremos que ellos tengan orgullo, que no tengan miedo para reportar crímenes y para hacerse como si ni tan venís con testimonio algo para una cosa que pasó con los crímenes.
Whereas the Newark Police Department serves all members of the public equally.
El departamento de la policía de Newark sirve a todos los miembros de nuestro público aquí al mismo nivel.
Whereas for all of the foregoing reasons, the City Council of the city of Newark would like to declare the city of Newark a welcoming city.
Y por todas estas razones que seguirán yendo, el municipal de la ciudad de Newark le gustaría declarar la ciudad de Newark como una ciudad acogedora.
Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the city of Newark hereby declares the city of Newark a welcoming city.
Y ya para terminar, para con... para terminar, todo esto queremos que el municipal de la ciudad, que estemos decollando esta ciudad de Newark como una ciudad de acogedora.
So we're going to reaffirm that resolution today, and the last comment I'll make before I turn it over to my colleagues for their comments is, I see that there's a number of real, significant leaders of our Hispanic community here in the audience today. I can say what I say to reaffirm this resolution, my colleagues can join me in a reaffirmation of that, but I need all leaders in my community to make sure that we get the word out to the community that that is who we stand for. That if we hear, as leaders of our community, fear in the community, whether it be from our children, our neighbors, or our family members, that we articulate to them as leaders of our community that this is what we stand for, not just the mayor and the city council, but we, the leaders of this community. We stand hand in hand to reaffirm this resolution. So the council adopted it, but there's an expectation by this council that we, as leaders of this community, are going to be marching hand in hand to make sure that this is something that we not only support, but we make sure we get that message out to our community that that is who we are moving forward. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues for any comments that they might want to make, and I'll start with Councilmember Contanzio.
Thank you. Mabohai, and that means welcome. And the reason why I want to say welcome is because it's really important that individuals, no matter where they are or where they're from, feel welcome in every environment that they walk into. I am an elementary school teacher, and so every morning, I smile and I say, "Welcome" to my class. And actually, I teach these little tiny five-year-olds because I'm a kindergarten teacher. And so often, I'm the first person that they see outside of their family, and I want to make sure that we are all an extended family, so not just in the classroom, but also in city hall and everywhere we go, and the streets in Newark especially. I want to make sure that people always feel welcome. And so I just want to share a quick story, my grandmother, in whom I was raised with, because I lived in a multi-generational home. It was also cross-generational, where I had my five siblings and my three cousins and my aunt and my uncle and my parents, and we were all there all together, and every day, we actually broke bread together. We always felt welcome. And I want that extended family feel for each person, no matter where they are and no matter where they're from. And so even my grandmother, you know, she always had such a heavy purse, and she would say to me, "Julie, go get me my purse." And I would say, "Grandma, it's so heavy, why is it so heavy?" And eventually, she actually showed me something. She opened up her purse, and in it, she showed me a handkerchief. That handkerchief, she unraveled it again, had another handkerchief and another handkerchief, and about seven handkerchiefs later, a little rock came out, and I said, "Grandma, why are you carrying this rock?" And she said, "Well, actually, young one, this rock was originally soil. When I left my homeland from our country, my brother reached down on the soil crying and saying, 'I know you're leaving, but it's okay because your home will always be with you.'" And so my grandmother said that she had carried that with her, and then she had moved from one country to another. It actually took her three months to come here from a boat. Okay? When she did come, she kept that with her, she kept her roots with her, she kept her story with her, and our language also with her. And so even though I was born here, I was also in English as a second language class because my first language was not English. My first language was our original dialect that my grandmother had taught us. And so it's always important that we stay welcome to everyone, no matter where they're from. And so those were my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Jorgens.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, it's always a challenge sometimes to take the kind of values and morals that we talk about up here and translate them into, whether it's, you know, a resolution, whether it's an ordinance, whether it's, you know, any kind of policy, you know, that we're looking at. And so I appreciate you, you know, taking the time to, you know, that we can reaffirm this, we can, you know, talk about it and, you know, talk to the community and see if, you know, there's any ways since 2017 that we can make improvements on this that, you know, we need to be doing better. And, I mean, because I think, you know, when we look at, you know, a specific resolution, a specific policy, you know, we want those as exactly as they can to align with the values that we're going to say that we're, you know, trying to get at. So, you know, I do appreciate that we're talking about this, and, you know, if, you know, I encourage members of the public to come to us, if there's any ways that we can do better, that's something that we're going to want to hear. We're going to want to, you know, have ordinances and resolutions that as closely match our values as we can. So, you know, I appreciate the opportunity that, you know, we can bring this, you know, to the community and say, "Hey, this is where we stand, you know, this is the resolution that follows from that." And, you know, hopefully that, you know, we can continue to live out our Newark values, you know, over the next years.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Grindal.
Yes. First of all, Mayor Hanon, I want to thank you for that excellent presentation and for bringing this forward to the council. It's very much appreciated, and as you noted, the community is really crying out for clarity in this, so I really appreciate it. So all our residents should feel safe, no one should feel, no one should be persecuted, our taxes should never be used to attack our residents, we shall not participate. I love the "shall not" in the resolution, I mean, in the state law. "We shall not participate in racist efforts to attack our residents and our diverse communities." I'm going to try to say this in Spanish, too. I took less than a semester. And the way you take less than a semester of Spanish is that you flunk out of it. Todos nuestros residentes deben sentirse seguros. Ningún residente debe ser perseguido. Nuestro incepto nunca deben usar para atacar a nuestros residentes. No participamos en el esfuerzo racista para atacar a nuestro residente y nuestra diversa comunidad. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Grindal. Vice Mayor Little. Thank you, Councilmember Grindal. Vice Mayor Little.
This is, first of all, te salió todo muy perfecto. Estaba perfecto. Muy bien, muy bien. This is a very, 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 very sensitive topic for me. I am, as, of course, I got thrown a bunch of fancy government words that Grandma never taught me, so I don't appreciate getting thrown that at the last second. But I, this is a very big topic for me, and this is really important. My mother is from Guadalajara, Jalisco, and she came here on a exactly nine-day fiance visa. I'm going to keep it real. She came here, she was on the show, I think. We'll have to check. She was on the show 45 years ago. But she, you know, she taught me Spanish. She made me very proud to be Hispanic, and I'm very proud. She made sure that I spoke Spanish. She made sure that I learned it, and it made me very, very proud. Una cosa que es muy importante para mí es porque esto es mi origen. Esta es mi gente, esta es mi familia, es aquí. Esto no me preocupa mucho porque estos días no sabe qué va a pasar. No sabes que alguien va a venir para todo esto, y no sabes qué va a pasar con las leyes, y tenemos miedo. We're very, very scared because we don't know what's going to happen with the laws and stuff like that. My mother is an American citizen. She has an American passport. I am still scared. I'm an American. I'm born and raised here. Hi, it's me. And I'm from here, and I'm still scared. And yesterday, when I was teaching a class at Mission College, I had one of my Hispanic students wait after class because they know I speak Spanish and they know I'm Hispanic. And she came up to me and she started talking to me, and she said to me, "I'm scared, Professor Eve, and I think I'm going to drop your class." And I was like, "Whoa, whoa, 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 don't drop the class. You've already paid for it. Stay with me." And she told me, "I'm scared. I have all my blinds closed in my house in San Jose, and I'm scared they're coming after me. I have four kids. I don't know what to do. I can't eat. I can't breathe." That's not what we should be like. That shouldn't be a place where we're scared. That shouldn't be the way it is. And back to, you know, this being, you know, the African-American Embrace Month and Black History Month, and this is so important. What did they do to go through this? They didn't choose to come here. They didn't, but they've grown up. These are the roots. This is where they live. This is their, this is their community now. And we have to make sure that they feel welcome and that they feel like they're part of this community. We have now, and many of them are generations upon generations. They are, they have a passport. This is your home. This is where you come from. But there's still not the fear of belonging. And that's what we want to make it very clear in the city of Newark. We not only want you to be here, we want you to feel that you belong here and that you're accepted here. You know, and it's really, really important that everyone knows that we're not, our police department is fantastic. They're not going to go, "I'm 1,000% here for you. If I need to be the one in front and cause, call me," because this is really important to me. Because no one should be afraid to live here. And everyone does the best. They're paying taxes. They're doing the right things. You know, and honestly, I'm scared. What's the next level going to be? The children of immigrants? Does that mean that I go home? You know, is Elon Musk getting shipped out? You know what I'm saying? I mean, do you guys see what I'm saying? At what level do we stop this? You know, we've had, you know, African-American here for over 200 years, and we still don't give them a sense of belonging. Now we're making this point of not making it comfortable, and this is not right. So I think we need to fight. I think we need to make sure everyone knows that we're welcome here because it would break my heart if someone took my mom and sent her back to a country she hasn't been to in 45 years to live. And this is not right, guys. This isn't correct. And we need to make sure everyone knows we're safe. I know my goal was, when I met Sandra with the organization, I was so excited because I love to represent cultures that don't get enough spotlight. And I want to help the organization grow and do my best because we need to make sure everybody, at a certain point, we get treated like equals. So I appreciate you guys. We bringing this to light again. This isn't a City Councilmember Eve thing. This is an immigrant's daughter that I'm scared my mom's going to go home. So this is important, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. City Manager Benun, any comments before I open up to the public? Great. Folks, if there's any member of the public that would like to comment on the city's reaffirmation of the welcoming community, feel free to come up to the podium and state your name for the record if there's any comments. Yes. Another great leader in our community, former councilmember, former vice mayor, longtime business owner, former councilmember Susie Cojazo, welcome.
Good evening.
Whose signature, oh, by the way, who seconded the motion on this resolution back in 2017. Did you remember that? You seconded the motion.
And my signature's on there. So if you need another signature, I'm here to sign again tonight. Thank you for the opportunity, for being here. Thank you for the reaffirmation of this resolution. I want to tell you, it was not last Sunday, but the Sunday before. My phone rang about eight o'clock in the evening, and it was a mother. She says, "Susie, I don't know what to do. My daughter doesn't want to go to school." She is third generation here. Her great-grandparents were immigrants that migrated. They became citizens. Her grandparents were citizens. Her mother's a citizen. She's a citizen. "I don't want to go to school," she kept saying, "because they said the migra's coming." That means immigration. Immigration's coming to the junior high on Monday morning. She goes, "I look Mexican. They're not going to believe me. I'm not from Mexico." I said, "They can't go onto the campus. They will not be allowed to go on the campus." Well, needless to say, it doesn't matter what we said. She didn't go to school on Monday. So I want to thank you for reaffirming, for making my community try to feel a little safer. And I think when our president says, "Make America great," he forgets, this is North America. We have Central America and South America. It's all America, so let's make all of America great. But we need to do this together. This is our land. This is for all of us. Our song says, "This is your land. This is my land." We have to work it together. And it's everybody sharing cultures, sharing whatever it is we need to share, except for hatred. So, thank you. I appreciate what you're trying to do. And I know that our police department's very diverse. I keep telling everybody. I said, "How about my police department's Latinos?" So come on, you know, don't be afraid. We're here. We're here to back you up. And I know I can count on all of you if I call on you guys for something. So you might have to go get me out of jail one of these days. Yeah, but thank you.
Thank you. Again, as one of our leaders, Councilmember Cojazo, help us get that word out to the community. Because you're a person that the community listens to. And if they hear it from me, they hear it from you, they hear it from us, I think they'll be reassured that that's truly the community that they live. So thank you for your reference.
You're welcome.
Greatly appreciated. Others, any other speakers on this item? Yes, Ms. Artiega, welcome.
First and foremost, I just want to thank you personally, Mayor Hannon, because I know you and I spoke about this. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing the right thing and making sure that our community felt safer. And thanks to you, and I know the rest of you in City Council, but I know particularly you really stood out there and made a difference. So thank you for reaffirming, for bringing this forward. Because while we may know we're a welcoming city, a lot of the residents don't. And I think today, you really made a difference, all of you. Thank you, Terrence. I know we had a long conversation, too. And Matt, thank you very much, all of you guys, from the bottom of our Latino community. Thank you. And I also want to say, happy, congratulations on the Black Month. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Artiega, I'd say the same thing to you that I would say to former Councilmember Cojazo. You're a leader in our community. Your word matters. People listen to you, not just you, but your family. Your family's been entrenched in our community for years. So you're a stable part of our community. Getting the word out to members of our community from you and your family would be instrumental. So thank you for that. Others. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close this item. I'm going to take a vote, Council, on reaffirming the resolution. Vice Mayor, you want to go and make that motion?
Absolutely. I'd love to make that motion.
Okay, and can I get a second? By Vice, by Councilmember Del Cantancio. All those in favor of reaffirming the resolution, we're going to go ahead and take a vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, members of the community. City Attorney?
Resolution, City Council of the City of Newark reaffirming the City of Newark as a welcoming city.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to take a five-minute break before we return to the agenda, so please take five minutes. Sorry about that.
We are live, Your Honor.
Great. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to go ahead and call the City Council back to order. And again, thank you for your patience, those of you that were here to present. So it's with my pleasure to introduce Ms. Soto, Executive Director of the Eden Council for Hope and Opportunity, known as Echo Housing, who's here to do a presentation. Before I open it up to Ms. Soto and Mr. Benun, and he comes great. Ms. Soto, please. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Yes. Before I get started, I just want to say that I am honored to have come to this specific meeting. Myself and Stephen Turner, and I've been planning this for a while, and I had some medical stuff, cataracts, that I had to take care of. And I waited nine months, and they finally, I've got it done, and now I can see. But I am even more honored to be here because as a daughter of an immigrant, my mom is from Sacatecas, which is by Jalisco. I would have to fly into Wauhala to get to my mom's little town. It makes my heart happy to know that this city is doing tremendous things to help out our immigrant population. So I just wanted to say that before I started out our, the meeting today.
Thank you.
Yes, so I don't know how to work this. Ah, there we go. So, um, thank you very much, Honorable Mayor Hanon and the rest of the City Council here in Newark. My name is Christina Soto, and I am the Executive Director for Eden Council for Hope and Opportunity, or Echo Housing. Echo Housing was founded in 1964 from a bunch of volunteers who wanted to make sure that there was housing rights and people's rights were not being violated. In 1965, we were incorporated as a nonprofit, and we will be 60 years old on August 10th of this year. And we are going to have a gala on August 15th, so we're really excited to celebrate our 60 years. Echo is also a HUD-approved housing counseling agency, and we are also a qualified fair housing enforcement organization, which means that we can be part of a lawsuit that a tenant is bringing against a property owner or a property management company. We choose to not do that because we want the tenant to be able to get whatever it is that they want to get, but we are one of the few agencies that are like that. Currently, right now, we are in the counties of Alameda, which where we started. In 1983, we actually received our first CBG grant through the city of Hayward. And then we're also in Contra Costa County, Monterey County, and we have one program in Larkspur and Marin County, and I'm going to be meeting with the city of Davis on Tuesday to talk about fair housing as well. So our first big thing is our fair housing services. Our fair housing services, what they do is whenever somebody calls into our office or they meet with one of my housing counselors, who are all HUD certified, they walk in, they speak with them, and it could be anything from the protected classes through the federal government to the classes that are protected here in the state of California. The state of California, we have about 14 of them. And one of the major ones is the Source of Income, or your Section 8 voucher. So that one is one of our big ones that we work a lot with in partnership with property owners and managers. We do not take sides. We try to work with both sides to work out any situations that may come. We also provide monthly regional fair housing workshops via Zoom for anybody who is interested in being trained on it. They're every third Friday of the month from 10 to 12 o'clock. And I do send the flyers out to Stephen, who posts them out for everyone to know. The next thing we have is our tenant property owner services. So what that is, is, as you know, in 2020, AB 1482 was passed, which was the Tenant Protection Act. And what we do is we make sure that every tenant knows their rights and every property owner knows their rights as well. Like I said, when we educate, we educate on both sides. For both of our tenant property owner and our fair housing, we offer mediation services for free. We have staff who are certified mediators, and they help to come up with some, with some kind of resolution that both sides can agree with. So they may not be exactly everything they want, but they both can say, okay, we can agree to this, and we can move forward. We are the step before it goes to court. So we always want to be that step before, so we can see if we can resolve it before it goes, it goes there. The next thing we have is our rental assistance program, which is only offered in the county of Alameda. And what that is, is every Monday, we take 20 names, and I have two counselors that actually work this program, and they have to be HUD certified in order to work the program. We pay, we look for funding to have our counselors be able to do the rental assistance program, and we partner with Seasons of Sharing, who is the entity and the holder of the funds that go out to the property owners should they receive rental assistance or deposit assistance. It ranges anywhere from $2,600 to $5,000, depending on the case that is set forth. We do not determine, we are not the final determiners. We are just like the middle person that gathers all the information, does a pre-qualification screening, send it off, and then, once they get approved, then it takes about three weeks for that check to go out to the property owner. The next one we have is our homebuyer education program. So we provide a homebuyer education program once a quarter, and that is an eight-hour class on a Saturday, where we talk about the ins and outs of how to become a homebuyer. If after you finish the eight hours and you are interested in pre-purchase counseling, which is free, that we offer to anybody who is interested, and they want to know if they're going to be able to, when are they going to be able to afford to buy a house? What are the things that they need to do and all of that? So my staff person, his name is Jonathan, he is also HUD, yeah, we have, he has to be HUD certified for this program as well, is he meets with them for two hours, sometimes it may take longer, and works with them through budgeting, through lenders, through everything, to try to get somebody on track to be able to purchase a house, which is what our dream always is, right? The next thing we, and then I talked a little about the pre-purchase already. Everything from mortgage financing to eligibility to credit, we go through all of that with each of the people that are interested in, in this project. The next thing we have, so this one, this program, our homesicking, or what we call Project Share, is, is a program that's offered in a couple of our jurisdictions where we match people that may have an extra room in their house with somebody who is looking for housing, and we bring them together, we run background checks on everybody. Once we do that and they agree that they want this to happen, then they decide how much the rent's going to be, if they're going to do a barter agreement. However they want to do it is how they do it. We just make sure that we do the backgrounds and that we're matching people that would be interested in this program. Our shared housing is also in a couple of our jurisdictions, and it's very similar to our home, home-seeking program as well. We are the program administrators for a few of the rent reviews and just cause ordinance projects for Alameda County, the city of Albany, the city of Concord, which is our newest one, the city of Emeryville, Union City, Larkspur, we started last May. And we are also looking at possibly being the administrator for the city of Salinas as well. We, those are, these are our offices. We have our Hayward office, we have our Livermore office, we have our Oakland office, and then we have various sites down in Monterey County. So that concludes my presentation. If anyone has any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Soto. Any clarifying questions before I open it up to the public? Is there anybody in the public that would like to ask questions based on this presentation? If not, I'll come back to my colleagues on the council for questions or comments. Vice Mayor.
Christina Soto, thank you so much for coming out here. I really appreciate it. I think this is great. I think sometimes people don't know there's, in high school, one of the problems that we have is we don't get taught a lot of things like budget financing and taking care of, you know, paying, the credit card has to get paid off at some point, things of the sort. So this is really great that you do a lot of different steps in this. This is great that you kind of hold their hands in this, but also it's really great that you kind of can offer legal advice without having to put a big bill on it. So I'm really glad to see that they have this because everyone's got to start somewhere. So I appreciate you guys organizing it. This is really nice. Thank you for coming out and teaching us more about it. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Yes, Councilmember Del Cantasio.
I just had a question regarding, as you mentioned, the 20 names. Is that usually randomly selected, or is there ever a waitlist?
So the way we're doing it right now, and it's going to change on March 3rd, but the way we're doing it now is calls come in on Monday starting at 9:00. And you can imagine, we get hundreds of calls at 9:00 o'clock on Monday. And they have to speak to a live person because we have to pre-qualify them with four questions. Once they do, they get put on the list, and usually those 20 names happen within 20 minutes. The way it's working, and then someone gets ahold of them on Tuesday and then tell them what needs, what paperwork they need to turn in, and then it, it starts from there. Starting March 3rd, it's all going into an automated system, and we are now doing it by the people that call and leave a message. Because before, we couldn't because it was just the phone, and we, we're trying to find different ways to make it a lot easier. There is so much need out there, especially since auditoriums were lifted. For COVID, people are still dealing with a lot of, a lot of evictions, unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Jorgens.
Yes, I want to also thank you for coming and giving your presentation. You know, Eden Echo has, you know, been in the fair housing support since 1964. That's before the Federal Fair Housing Act was passed. So you guys have been doing very good work, very, very well for a long time. And I, I just want to thank you for, you know, the focus on, you know, renters as well as people buying homes, just because, you know, renters have rights as well, you know, as well as home seekers. So, you know, making sure that everyone in our community knows that whatever their living situation is, that they do have rights, that they are protected. So I do appreciate you, you know, highlighting that for our community.
Great. Any other, Councilmember Grendal.
Yes, one, one more. I want to thank you very much for, for bringing this information to us and this excellent presentation and all the work you're doing in our community. I'm particularly drawn to the homebuyer education idea. I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be moving towards having some income-restricted ownership housing at some point in, in our community. And, but it's very important as, as I'm sure, I know you're, you're well aware that, that people understand the process, and they, and there also, there are things they can do now that help their credit scores and so on and so forth. Do you, so I do have a question, though. Do you do those, those by Zoom sometimes, or do you, do you offer them in, in the communities? How can, can we help you publicize it when you do, or, I'm sorry, I think that was three questions. So I'll, I'll stop there.
So currently, our homebuyer education is done via Zoom. Because we, everyone that's in the jurisdiction of services we offer are, can come. And what we don't want to happen is if someone in Monterey County is like, yeah, but all, we want to go, but it's in Alameda County, we just want to make sure we capture everybody. What we have been doing now is, we actually have been doing in-person workshops if they are requested by jurisdictions. We do do that, we arrange it, and we go out and, and we do that.
Thank you. Okay, I have a number of questions. First of all, I want to introduce Mr. Grendal. Mr. Grendal over here, Councilmember, will be sitting on the Alameda County Housing Authority. No, no, I'm not done with you, Ms. Soto.
That was a quick aside.
Mr. Grendal will be representing the city of Newark on the Alameda County Housing Authority. Obviously, you partnered with them. I served there for 10 years, and quite an impressive group of individuals up there, also receiving their money, as you know, through HUD. How many units do you currently, so you met, you basically inspect units in these cities that are currently on housing vouchers, isn't that correct?
No, what we do is, so we don't have units, per se, ourselves, but let's say somebody calls and says, you know.
No, let me clarify. Do you inspect units where vouchers are issued by Alameda County for folks that are renting with vouchers in Newark?
Yes.
That's what I thought. How many units do you currently inspect in Newark? And are those done on a proactive basis or a complaint basis?
They're on complaint basis, and I don't have that number with me, but I can get it to Stephen, and he can pass it on to you.
Okay. Do you do any routine annual inspections of these units other than on a complaint basis?
No, we do not.
Okay, is that something that you've thought to consider implementing in the future? Because again, the reason I ask that is we have, not just in Newark, but in many communities, we have older multifamily buildings, and oftentimes, as we talked about, just with our immigration, members of our community, a lot of those folks are unwilling to file complaints because they're fearful that in filing a complaint, they may be asked to vacate their unit. So there's that little fear that they're, they're dealing with. So I've always felt it's important to come up with a inspection program where we, the government or an agency, come out and inspect those units on a routine basis to make sure that the funds that folks are paying for their units are maintained at minimum, meeting minimum health and safety standards. So it's something I think you ought to try to consider in the future. As Mr. Grendal will find out, the Housing Authority of Alameda County has the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but similarly, what Echo does, they, they give folks an opportunity to come up with a plan to put them on a path of homeownership, and they've been successful in getting some of those folks to be able to buy homes. So thank you for what you do. I appreciate that, but, you know, folks are paying significantly high rents these days. And I granted, I understand that a lot of these folks that are receiving vouchers are only paying a percentage of their income towards that rent, but they're still paying a significant amount of monies towards that. I just want to make sure that those folks are living in units that are maintained at the highest standard. And would ask Echo, as you're contracting with these agencies, maybe to consider an inspection program in the future. Okay?
Yes, thank you. And then our board president works for Alameda County for the Housing Authority, and he actually is supervisor of the self-sufficiency program, self-sufficiency program. So I'm glad that you're going to be, you're going to be on that board.
I know him well, Daniel.
Yes, Daniel Taylor.
I know Daniel well, Daniel Taylor. Excellent, thank you for the presentation. Have a nice evening. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, the next item is on the agenda, is the public comment section of the agenda. This is an opportunity for folks to comment on any item that's not currently on the agenda. Is there anybody that would like to speak to an item not on the agenda? Okay, the next item is our consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of the following: the approval of the audited demands, the approval of the January 16th, 2025 special meeting, and January 23, 2025 regular meeting minutes, and three, to adopt a resolution approving agreement with HDL, Corin, and Cone for Property Tax Management Services. Mr. Benun, any item that you'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
Not this evening.
Folks, any item that you'd like pulled from the consent calendar for discussion? Colleagues, any item you'd like to pull from the consent calendar? If I can get a motion to accept the consent calendar, please?
So moved.
By Councilmember Jorgens?
One second.
By Councilmember Grendal? Please vote. And that passes unanimously, 5-0. There are no public hearings. City Council matters. We already took care of the welcoming city. Thank you for the conversation. I thought it was very beneficial tonight. Thank you for that. We do not have a closed session, so I'll turn to City Manager. Any, anything you'd like to report, City Manager?
Yes, good evening, Your Honor, and members of the council. Two quick items. First, on Wednesday, February 26th, at 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the Newark Library, the city will be hosting an Objective Design Standards Community Open House. The city is developing objective design standards for residential and mixed-use projects. The public is invited to learn about the project and to provide feedback onsite in building design elements. And again, that is Wednesday, February 26th, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Newark Library. And the second announcement, the Newark Recreation and Community Services Department is hosting a hiring fair on Friday, February 21st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Siliman Center, located on Maori Avenue. Public is invited to come and learn about various summer positions that are available in our Recreation and Community Services Department. There'll be lifeguard, virtual reality demos, application assistance, and job interviews will be conducted onsite. All this information is contained on the city's website at www.nuark.org.
Thank you, Mr. Benun. Colleagues, council issues? I'll start with Councilmember Del Cantasio.
Yes, there we are. First, I just wanted to also say that I was able to go to the Siliman Center over the weekend to celebrate Black, Black history, and I think that that was really a wonderful experience as well. There were many vendors that were even coming as far as Sacramento to come and be with us, and they had drums and celebrations and speeches, and so that was a really great time. There was also two events to celebrate Lunar New Year in Alameda County that I've also attended, and so that was wonderful as well. On February 28th, there is a Special Olympics that's coming up. It's going to be held at Newark Memorial High School at 10 a.m., and it's my understanding, when I spoke to Coach K, that there's about 300 registered families in Alameda County that's going to be coming over to, that's going to be coming over to the high school on that date. So the public is welcome because they would like people to be in the audience to celebrate and to help, just be there to cheer on the Special Olympics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jorgens? Okay, Councilmember Grendal?
I have a few things. First of all, I did attend my first housing committee meeting. I'm not actually officially on the housing committee yet, but I was going to attend with the mayor, but he got hit with a nasty flu, so I got to, I got to sit in the audience. And there were no close votes, Mr. Mayor, so your, your attendance was not necessary. However, there were a couple of things that were, that were brought up at the meeting, I thought, I think are interesting for my colleagues and the community to share, to understand. They, late last year, they opened their waiting list for projects that were approximately 200 units. I didn't get the exact number. 35,000 applications were received for those units. About 350 of those were from Newark. And the, the, so just, just to, just so we don't forget, how, what a, what a huge crisis in housing that we're having, how much, how much need there is out there, and to keep that in, for us to keep that in mind. And, and also very, you know, what's happening in Washington, you know, seems distant, but right here in Alameda County, they almost, because of the illegal action of cutting off payments that the executive branch was trying to pull off, they almost missed their payments that would have, that would have potentially caused, caused evictions and other problems for, for residents. So at the last minute, they, they, they pulled it out, and they're now struggling with how they're going to manage their financing. So just, just to be aware that those, that those things that we see on TV could hit us very hard right close to home. So in addition, and this is going to sound a little familiar, but I, I, I would like to see us consider reaffirming our inclusive community status as well. The, the, the LGBTQ community is being targeted and, and they're, the, they're feeling very threatened and concerned. So I would like to, I'd like to, to ask the council to consider putting on a future agenda, reaffirming our inclusive status. We, we've been an inclusive community for, for a long time, well ahead of other communities. And, and I'd like to, I'd like to consider doing that because again, people are really hurting. And so anyway, I'd like to, I'd like to see if we can do that. I'm sorry, do you, do you need council consensus on that or?
No, I'll, I'll let you go first, then we'll, we'll come back.
Sure, thank you. Appreciate that. And then, um, the promatorius is, is putting on an event on Tuesday, the 25th, at 10:30 a.m. It's working with the police department, covering a lot of, some, some of the same issues we were dealing here, trying to provide reassurance to residents. I believe it's called Dos Say de Policia or something like that. So there's going to, that means there's going to be sweetcakes of some kind. And so just wanted to draw attention to that. Promatorius is doing that, but, but of course, our police department are playing a big role in helping to get that word out. So wanted to, oh, it's, it's being held at, at the Civic Center, I think, at the library?
At the library.
Thank you, sir. So just wanted to bring that to attention. And last, I'm having my second counsel, coffee with a council member on Saturday, the 15th, at 10, at 10 a.m. at the Newark Starbucks. Just stop in, say hello if you'd like. The, this is the Newark Starbucks on the corner, not the Starbucks in the Safeway. So I was, I was reminded to stress that by, by a recent, by a friend recently. So it is, it's on the Newark, on the Newark corner, and please stop by. And just if you want to, if you want to bring anything to my attention or just get to know me, I'd be, be happy to get to know our residents. Thanks.
Yes, to your request, Councilmember Grendal, I don't think there'd be any opposition from any of my colleagues to have the city manager look at bringing the resolution on inclusiveness back to the council in the near future. Okay? Vice Mayor.
I promised a lot of events last time, and it's happening. So I am working, as you guys know, a lot of my concerns and my main focus is kids and senior citizens, and that's where I'm putting my, all my energy. So I just got confirmation, I am throwing four VIP Pokemon parties, VIP parties, for collectors, kids that are into collecting and stuff like that. It's going to be at the 88 Card House, which is the official Pokemon store in Newark. Bet you haven't gone there yet. And we are going to have door prizes thanks to-
How, how do you know that?
My son. And my, my, my wallet and my son go there a lot. And it's, it's, we have a beautiful door prizes that have been donated by Bill of Life. Some great stuff we're going to be giving away. But it's, every single month, I'm going to invite a different school, a Newark school, public schools, that they have come out, just get off their computers, get off their electronics, and learn how to play and communicate and barter, a different stuff and play. So that's going to be going on. I have four of them coming up. Those will be posted soon on social media. And then the second one is, I got the confirmation of my seniors, my senior citizen workshops. It's going to be May 6th. It's going to be the first one, which is about cybersecurity and identity theft. And it's going to be brought to you by identity, the identity organization. And the FBI will be coming out to do a presentation on identity theft. So super excited about that. And the second one is going to be on May 1st, and that one is going to be called What the Heck is Social Security? Question and answer and let people know because no one really knows what the changes that are going on and stuff like that. So we have that going on. You can RSVP at RSVP@eveMurrayLittle.com for that. Get the information there. On March 15th, I'm hosting an Earth Day at Don Edwards'. And we are going to be cleaning up the area with 100 scouts. So if anybody's looking for some volunteer time, we're going to be working on cleaning up the Don Edwards' area. We've partnered with some other organizations because they're a little bit tied on fundy, so they can use a little bit of cleanup duty there. And I'm organizing March 31st is going to be Mission Peak Yo-Yo Day. We're going to have a bunch of yo-yoists come out. We're going to be doing a lot of competitions, but we're bringing out the San Francisco Spin Doctors, which is the professional yo-yoists that travel to international regionals and national, regional, national, and international competitions with their yo-yos. And they're going to come do some, some shows for the kids and stuff like that. So it's going to, just trying to get more people outside, get kids outside playing with toys, going back to nostalgic stuff, and it's going to be a lot of really fun stuff. So those are the next events for the next two and a half months for me.
Excellent. The May 6th event, did you indicate where that would be at?
May 6th? Oh, thank you so much. It's been in partnership with Newark, with the Newark Library.
Okay.
And it's going to be hosted there, and it's free to come out.
Great. Oh, you know, I've gotten calls from many, many other cities around the Bay Area. You know, I've heard about this Vice Mayor Eve Little that you have down there. You know, we could certainly use that energetic, energetic buddy up here in our community. Can we borrow her for a while? Keep telling them, no, stay away from our vice mayor. So thank you for what you do for our youth and for our adults. Those are some great events. Is that why I see like a little Pokemon sign on the stop sign on the court near me? Is that one of those locations? You know, I see a little-
You just, you gotta go, you gotta find it. You gotta collect them all.
No, I found it.
You gotta collect them all. No, it's going to be a lot of fun, and I'm trying to keep them really low-priced and stuff. But we want, I just want kids to get outside again. I want them to get playing with books and crafts and collections and fun stuff. Just get them off the electronics and do some fun stuff.
Excellent. Thank you for all of that information. Couple items. One, I want to make sure I take a moment to thank the Newark Rotary Club. They had an incredibly successful crab feed this last weekend. And remember, these are all volunteers in the Newark Rotary whose only goal is to see what we can do to uplift those in our community. Thousands and thousands of dollars were raised at that event, and all of that money will be going back to nonprofits in our community. So huge thanks to them. Huge thanks to the Newark Unified School District for their Interact Club, who participated and helped us. We can't be a successful crab feed without the assistance of the Interactors. They were able to raise over 3,000, almost $3,000 for their fund-to-need programs. So we were so happy to be able to support that as well. And through the generosity of those that were in attendance, over $10,000 was donated to help folks that need wheelchairs in third-world countries. And that money's going to be doubled by the organizers, organizers of that event. So big thanks to Newark Rotary for hosting again another event. Those tickets go fast, folks. If you want to get a Newark Rotary Crab Feed ticket for next year, you better be thinking about it today because those tickets go quickly. But huge thanks to those folks. Tomorrow is Valentine's Day. So whether it's your husband, your wife, your parents, your grandparents, your children, whomever you have, hold close to you, you know, it's an opportunity to say I love you. So take that opportunity tomorrow. I mean, we should be saying it every day, you know, as we learned tonight, whether it be Black History Month or welcome. We should be saying that to our friends and family every day. But tomorrow's a real special day. So make sure you take that moment to thank those that are close to you and let them know how important they are to you. Because we just don't know when our day will be called, and you don't want to leave that, that thought on the table. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting and wish everybody a great weekend.